Alrighty, we'll call the meeting to order. The selectmen's meeting of September 23rd, 2020, and it is six o'clock. And we will pledge allegiance first.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first is our town administrator weekly update.
Hi there, good evening. Too long of a list tonight as we have been inundated with voting taxes and you guys have a lot of old business from last week that have to be caught up on, so not too many things to go over. The first thing I wanted to ask about was the Zoom payments. So as of now, we're still paying the monthly fee for Zoom because there's the possibility that code enforcement, planning board might need to have a public hearing that we're not going to be able to sustain. I just wanted to kind of put the bug in you there that we are still paying. For over 100 people, it's about $60 a month. It was $30 before that we were paying, but we couldn't guarantee with the last couple of public hearings that we wouldn't have more than 100. So we are still paying that month by month unless you disagree. We'll keep, carry it through for another couple of months and see what happens.
Yeah, I'd keep on going.
I would, yeah.
Update on the generator. The company did come out on Monday and they did some troubleshooting on it. They found one wire that they felt like wasn't grounded well and might be the reason that it wasn't restarting itself or testing itself. They did actually turn the power off, reset it to run 15 minutes later, and it picked up automatically. So did some, you know, basic troubleshooting, fixed that one wire, tested it the way we would have, and it did run today, so hopefully.
Hopefully that was it?
That's it. We need to talk about the furnace and the furnace at the gym and the tank over there. I know that last week we had the conversation that somebody was interested in possibly leasing out the gym. I don't have this 100% yet from the attorney, but one of the things that I worked on this week, it does look like in order to enter into a lease agreement, the town approval would be necessary. So that's not, may not be something that you're going to have the authority to do without town approval. With that said, whether it can or can't, the treasurer pointed out to me again today that we have no money for heating that building. So I need one of you to go over and make sure the furnace is off because it's getting cold enough where it may kick on. Make sure it's turned off. You only have money for electricity. If we get a definite within the next couple of weeks that we can't do it without town meeting, then we're going to need to think about winterizing it and shutting it down. There were a couple of areas that Fred Warren wanted to kind of look into before he gave me a definite on the gym. Another way that possibly can be done if it wasn't a lease, so he's not completely sold on that yet, but to kind of tie together, but I need someone to look at it because we need to turn off the automatic delivery.
Mm-hmm.
And figure out what you're going to do with it if it gets cooler.
Yeah, you're going to have to drain the pipes.
I can do it.
Perfect. In regards to oil, we did reach out to the current company that we had. In the past, we've gone out to bid probably every three years just to see what's out there and see if we can get a better price for the town. We're only, this would be our third year, reached out to the company that we've used in the past, asked them what kind of number they're looking at, and in general, the board can decide if they want to go out to bid if you think that you might get a better number. Even going out to bid for the last, say, at least six years or so, we've ended up with the same company that's given us the best price. Now, our number's going to drop some because the gym's going to come off of that, our usage.
Right.
So I don't know how much of a factor that would play, but we need to.
That's the only building that we had oil at anyway. All the rest were all propane, right?
Right. Well, right, when I say bid, it's oil slash propane together.
Yep.
The next one, just to let you know that I sent the staff an email. We were reminded through our insurance company that we need to be doing video monitor training once a year. Something fairly new that we need to get better at keeping up on. Essentially, anybody that sits in front of a computer for more than X amount of hours a day is required to take it. It's fairly short, small quiz about posture and monitors safety margins. We did authorize anybody that needed to come in a half hour, an hour early and gave them about two weeks to take it. It's short and pretty self-explanatory, so. Last week, we talked about what the definition of the town hall use of the hall was. We talked about the library and the fact that I believe we left it, that you guys felt like the library was considered a part of the town and they could use it. And I really hate to put this out there, but I get it off my shoulders and put it on yours. The little Girl Scouts want to use the hall. And it's, I mean, it's tough because it's the Girl Scouts, but it's an outside entity.
Right. We said no.
Situation's going on in the school. What are your, I mean, what are your thoughts?
They couldn't, they can't use the school, could they?
I didn't ask.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, we do, we did limit it to just town.
We did.
Yeah. I hate to say it, but, I mean, how many Girl Scouts are there? Half a dozen?
Yeah, probably. These are the, I think these are the little, little ones.
Yeah, they probably could meet at one of their houses or something. It's just an idea.
If you let them do it, then the next person, what do you let them do?
Yeah.
Well, we made the decision.
Yep.
Make sure the decision was that the board said no, not me.
Yep. Tell them we're sorry.
I'll come tell them, come see if it's cookie time and they make up for it.
There we go.
You recall, I have a property owner that is interested in One Worth Kind subdivision, and he is, I'm updating you this because it came via email and want to make sure that you guys saw it. He sent an email indicating that he had asked for the information, you know, exelon time ago and hadn't gotten a response. I did find the email that went between the code enforcement staff and myself and him indicating that we had the file upstairs ready for him to review. So it never happened, so we put the file away. COVID happened, things have changed some. He has since reached out again, hoping to come in and review that file, so we're making arrangements for him to come in and do that on Friday. I did say in the email, and I think that I spoke on behalf of code enforcement, that it's not a question and answer period. And look through the file, decide what you need, write down the questions, and then we can go back. I'm expecting them to meet with him at that, at that time. Our other individual that is, has concerns with what's going on in Stewart Drive that we spoke about last week, has also been in numerous times, or a couple of files, but he is, he's asking to see code enforcement staff, has been helpful in gathering them under our ass for him. I brought them upstairs, sat down with the individual, and we went through them. He, you know, he has 101 questions, and I don't pretend to know any of the answers, and continue to say that, you know, we need to have this meeting with the five of us. You know, you need to agree to sit down with code enforcement, with the board of selecting myself, let's go through these one at a time. For now, he's refusing to do that, so, you know, I'm really at my, there's no other action that I can take. I mean, I, you know, we've provided him the information, we've allowed him to review the files. He can't be left unattended without one of the selectmen and myself present based on past practice, so. He's indicated that, you know, his next step is an attorney, and, you know, as much as I tried to resolve that, I, you know, I end it by saying, make sure that, you know, when you walk into the attorney's office, that the first thing you say is that I'm refusing a meeting with the department and the board of selectmen. Because that's what I'm trying to set up, so.
Yep.
We are still chugging away at that one.
Okay.
Fire chief reached out to me in regards to the tanker, the old tanker that he wants to sell. Well, I just said two things. He did say that he expects by next week to be able to present to you what his recommendation is going to be. He's still waiting for some numbers from one of the companies. I don't know. Ed, did you have a chance to talk to him?
I've talked to him briefly.
Okay. I'm going to get with you on one of those. But he wants to start advertising the old tanker. He says it comes out of service effective October 1st, and he doesn't want him along ornament, so the conversation is, what do we want the minimum bid? We're going to do a sealed bid, minimum as is, no warranty, you know, all the way through the number. What do we think it's worth?
I'll do a little research, and maybe Dave can too. I mean, the, tank-wise, it's not worth a heck of a lot. Truck-wise, it's probably worth more, you know, chassis-wise.
He gave me a number of $5,000, but wanted me to.
Yeah.
To run that by the two of you.
Yeah, what year is that? That's 85, I think.
I have to pull.
Yeah, I think it's an 85.
I can give you the specs and maybe, apparently he'll let me get it advertised next week, so. And it'll be out for a couple of weeks, so at least people can go buy and look at it if they're interested in it.
Yeah. That's probably not a bad number on that. You know, if the frame is bad on it, and that's part of the issue, engine and transmission are worth that.
Worth that.
The axles are worth it, you know, padding it out, so. Yeah.
So you want the time, you're going to take this number and just go with that?
Just remove that number.
Yeah, I think it'll work. Yep.
Next item, just an update that the trial contract is coming due with the transfer station. Mr. Mann and I have been in a conversation with the company, and Jim Neveson, who is our contact, he's working on putting a contract together. There is going to be an increase, I think, in the hauling number, but by next week, I'll have a draft you to prepare. It does expire October 1st. And the last item isn't so much for the board. It's an item that while I'm on camera, to take two minutes to kind of speak to the voters of Acton, because of kind of what's going on and just to leave a little, offer a little bit of guidance if we can. If you haven't by now, you've probably, you've probably received at least three to five items in your mail regarding registering to vote or absentee voting. It is a very confusing time, especially for our elderly residents. There are massive mailings going out saying, somebody in your household does not register to vote. Fill this out immediately and send it to the clerk. And it's getting people really confused and upset. This is just parties or groups that are doing that. If you look at the outside of the envelope, they say resident. They don't say Dick Neil. They're just trying to get somebody to fill it out. Everybody's sending in the absentee ballot request. If you send in an absentee ballot request, you only need to send one. Even if every party, every candidate, one party sends you one, which is happening, and they're all printed out with your name and address, you only need to send one. We're getting people that are sending, you know, five or 10 requests from one ballots, that they're calling saying, what do you mean you took me off the voting list? I mean, it's, some of the stuff, and some of the things, as Cheryl will attest, some of the people are filling out the voter registration cards with just flat-out nasty notes on, you know? I'm already registered and you're bleeding deep in town. What'd you do with my record? You know, you don't need this shit. I mean, they're swearing at us, because they have the saying, they're not registered to vote.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Please call me. I will be happy to look and confirm that you're registered.
Can people come in and pick up their absentee ballots too?
They can come in once they're available.
Yeah, they're not yet, right?
The loss is 30 days before the election, so we're looking at around October 2nd. I do have money in my budget, but don't be surprised if you drive by on a Saturday night or Sunday night and show Kale and I are having a pizza party. Stuff in, currently we've got over 400. We've got to put them all in the system, print labels, get them in the mail, so. But it's just, it's aggravated from the clerk's point of how misleading some of the stuff is to the voters, because there's so much going on out there that just doesn't, you know, happen. Today's mail was probably the best of all of them. I got a voter registration card, and a top was for the voter to vote, and the bottom was a picture of a candidate, not which candidate, and it's folded, so it's addressed to Jennifer Ruth, who are from Acton. So when you open it, you can see that, you know, the voter's registering to vote, and you can see this candidate that has helped send them this letter. Well, I got a pair of us cussing me out, saying, I'm supporting this guy. You know what I mean? This guy is going to send this house, and they just tie it all together. So now, you know, we're talking about fraud of election, the clerk automatically wants Billy Bob. I mean, it's just, it's frustrating. So if you hear anybody talking about absentee voting or wondering if they're registered to vote, please, we would much rather take your call as the voter than anybody being unsure of what's actually going on.
You don't send out any kind of letter or?
You don't send anything.
Does not send out anything.
Does not send anything.
The only thing you'll send out.
Unless they call.
Call me and ask me to send you an absentee ballot, I will never ever call, I will never ever send you anything like that.
Yep.
It is your right to vote. You don't have to. It can make you. But it's, it just, it breaks my heart for the elderly, the primary, because they're just getting really confused, and that's just sad. Alright, that's my spiel, I'm good.
Alright. I think we all signed the warrant bills, right?
Yep.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second that.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Alrighty. Minutes of the last meeting.
I believe we have two.
We have two, yep.
Any comments? And just one of those, we're looking for approval from the 2nd and 16th?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the selectman meeting minutes of September 2nd and September 16th. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Department head committee chair updates. We have one here. District 1 road commissioner.
Well, Mr. Claude Road Commissioner, just an update on the age road. Monday morning, Mike Industries moved in. They reclaimed the age road, the section we're going to reclaim Monday, Tuesday, and today they finished out. Everything's fine graded, and hopefully everything goes good the rest of the week. They hopefully be in here Monday or Wednesday next week, but the cold weather's been throwing them off a couple of ways, so they did push behind, so. It's all reclaimed, section we're going to do, like I said, it's all fine graded, but it was really slow going from up there Monday and Tuesday. They were hitting some, they were averaging anywhere between 78 inches of hot top the whole time, paving, some group-sized rocks they were hitting in there. One of the gentlemen I work with said they'd be going 500 to 1,000 feet, and I was just talking to James T., that's all profit was up there, but it's all set, ready to go, so hopefully Monday, Monday, Wednesday next week, they'll be paving, so.
Nice. That'll be nice.
Any questions? No other thing here?
Thanks, well. Alright, moving on to old business. Iron Tail concerns.
Yep, so to follow up from last week, I told you guys that we left the meeting on Wednesday, that code enforcement officer and myself are going to speak on Friday to kind of go over some of the things that were brought to the public on Wednesday. So Ken is here tonight to kind of catch up where we're at with Iron Tales and kind of what the thoughts are going forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you guys have questions or?
My biggest question is, is Iron Tales within their right code, whatever, to operate the way they're operating with the outside music? Just to back up a little bit, I was doing some work at the house Saturday, yes, Sunday afternoon, and checked my phone. We had an email from the Tapscotts, which live on Moon Pond, way down at the end. I don't recall the house number, but it's like the third house from the end. So I was done doing, I was doing, I think I'm going to take a ride down, so I did. I went down by Iron Tales first to verify, yeah, they had a band playing. And then I went down Moon Pond, East Shore Drive, stopped at the Camp Nutter, which is the first bend in the road, and couldn't hear anything. Thought, okay, well, so continued down. I got probably within 500 feet of the end of the road, and my phone rang, and it was Mrs. Tapscott. They didn't have a clue I was in the area, so I said, I'm actually going to be at your house in a few minutes. So I met with them, and I get out of the truck, walked up to the house, and we walked between the house and the pond, which is the backside of the house. And yeah, I could, I could hear the music. I could tell what was playing. It was a Pink Floyd song, I know, you know, I know the music, I could hear it pretty clear. And had to admit that it was probably worse than I thought it probably would have been. So thanked them for the call and whatnot, left, went back, and as I was coming back, I was stopping at different points. About the time I got to the hot top, well, the hot top stats, you lost the sound, and it wasn't, I didn't hear it again all the way out. When I was at the house, I have an app on my phone that I brought a map up on, pinpointed their house where I was standing, and looked over to, it's a straight shot across to Iron Tales, across the pond. Pond's long and narrow, it's right down, there's a little peninsula that sticks out, which is in the way between their house and Iron Tales, but it's minuscule. And so I think, you know, the sound is traveling right down the lake. I know at my camp on Willson, I can hear people talking on the other side of the lake on a quiet day, so.
Especially.
Yeah, yeah, this was a little after four in the afternoon, between four and 4:30, Sunday afternoon. So, you know, with that, I just, I want to know, I guess, you know, where did we set it? Is Iron Tales doing what they're supposed to be doing? Can they do what they're doing? And then where do we need to go from there? If any?
So they've been doing it for several years. I don't know what Pat Hannon or Big Daddy's had going on at the time for the conditional use to carry through and the existing conditional use. So the ordinance, as we all, you read it, and it's black and white. It's as black as white as it can be. As you know, zoning gets grayed very fast in interpretation with property rights. So the decimal readings is 60 for commercial at the property lines, and of course, then you've got to keep reading for exclusions and exemptions. One of the exemptions, noise created by recreational activity. It is noise, is a recreational. I heard you were getting gray here. Which is permitted by law, or which is a license permit and has been granted by the town, excluding but not limited to parades, sporting events, concerts, and fireworks. Is it a concert? So it's all types of interpretations for that there. We usually work our office from complaints. Somebody files a complaint, and we usually look into it. This particular situation, I've never gotten a complaint in the past 10, 15 years. I don't even think I've gotten inquiries. And that's what we usually call when somebody asks about something. I've probably got a dozen inquiries about the fairgrounds with a couple of things I got going on over there this year already without even a fair, so I've got 12 times across the street as I do with Iron Tales. So I would say there is some gray area. I have talked with him. He had intentions to come in the spring and expand his conditional use for outside activities. So the conditional use they've got is for 300 people inside and out, maximum capacity on both sides of it. We never put, the planning board never put a condition on it for decimal readings like we did with the animal rescue league coming in, that we just went through the planning board. We saw the opportunity, put it right on the plan. Now I have it on the plan, I have an enforceable document. It's really hard when I've got to go in front of this Superior Court judge, and I'm starting to connect dots to try to convince the judge this is an issue of some kind or something. An existing conditional use, it's one that existed prior to things changing and things. He can increase without going to the planning board, a maximum of up to 25% in there without coming through a planning board. We do that in my office, providing, there's not new materials or a new process previously not associated with the use. Again, it gets grayer now because there was music there, was it in, was it out? According to the owner, it's been outside for almost 10 years. So again, we've never got complaints before, and as you said, that noise has to go through the tree line, through Middle Road, through Loop Road to get to 744 East Shore. And originally, I thought, you know, geez, that's a couple miles away, but as you go east shore, it continues, just keeps looping, 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 and then does line up and through there. So when I'm only getting one complaint, it's hard to justify me making that priority and putting that on my top things to do. If we're getting more complaints, or it's an environmental issue, if one person calls and says, oh my God, somebody just cut a tree in the forest down by the lake, that's something we'd go take a look, or it's a life safety issue, we would prioritize that as well, too. But I don't have an issue with it. It wouldn't be anything I'd write a notice of violation and shut him down for. To me, it's not that clear. He does plan to come back through the planning board and clarify his conditional uses. In a way, it's a good learning experience for him to say, okay, I've got a neighbor, I think it's 3,700 feet away in the straight line. For one, what's changed this year? Well, they ripped down that big building, which is in the opposite direction, but that may have played an effect in that. So he's going to try to set up some temporary barriers, redirect the speakers, bring those bags, drop the decibels, and try to make some alterations. Because if he comes into the planning board and you've got a mad neighbor, you may drag out other neighbors too at the same time, because that conditional use of others within 500 feet of it are going to get notified when he goes to expand it. So it's a great time for him to make adjustments, to make the, well, the direct about is, we're not getting any complaints from him if one that's well over a half mile away. Make them happy, make this subside so they're not hearing it. I went out the one night that I went out and it kept quiet. I couldn't even get the, and that was at seven o'clock at night. I couldn't even get the crickets to register my sound, you know? So, and uniquely, I guess his band's five to seven in the afternoon. It's an afternoon thing, usually in this type of situation, it'd be an evening event.
I was down there before Ed got there, because I got a phone call, and honestly, I thought, there's no way, you know, it's going to be loud down there. I could, I could hear, I could sing along to the lyrics. It was that loud, and they're doing, I don't, I wouldn't have put up with that five minutes. I can't believe they put up with it that long.
You said it was during the day, not night?
That was around two o'clock, but, but it does go longer. But, so, you tell us we can't do anything about this, right?
It's not clear cut. It is gray at best, I enter the interpretation of it. He's had an existing use. Planning board never pinned him down, too. The band was inside, the band was outside, no amplified music. Best thing to me is to work with the property owner and make adjustments down there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would think that would be, you know, so it makes everybody happy.
Yeah, I think he's got three Saturdays left or something like that till he closes for the season.
Yeah. Is there anything that the governor came out with to do with covert that would have changed the way he does business outside versus in?
Well, June-ish or so, whatever, when they decided to open up the restaurants, they would tell everyone to go outside. He's already permitted for 300 people inside or out, so he already had the permits to be outside, so.
So when you say inside and outside, is that for dining, or is that for the music?
It was never specified in the conditional use.
As far as I know, he was always inside for years. And then, of course, they took the big building down, like you were saying, and now it's on the backside of the building.
Yeah.
Like Ed said, he didn't hear it when he come out of 109, because he's not good because he was on the wrong side of the building. Music's on the other side. That's why they're hearing it on the old pond like they are.
But the music's not, I thought it was on the building facing that way. They're under the tent facing where the old building was.
Yeah, that's where he usually has them outside, where he has over the years.
Now the speakers going in, and maybe it absorbed into that concrete or mason area some, so they're going to just point everything back into it. But of course, metal buildings, that's going to amplify out too. He had plans for a 14-foot wide fence around that old perimeter. I think the sound would be a lot better.
Oh, you know, the trees are, you know, 30, 40 feet high.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's obviously going over that, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to do something like that, you've got to have something to absorb the, absorb the sound.
Exactly.
Something special, not just wood.
Yeah.
When I, when I was headed back home, I stopped across from Iron Tales where they discontinued the little turnaround that used to go into 13th Street.
Yeah.
There's now a big fence there, but there's an area you can pull in there. I pulled in there and shut the truck off and listened, and it was as loud there as it was down on the end of Loop Road, I mean, the end of East Shore Drive. So, you know, the way, just the direction that the sound travels, so.
And the wind.
Yeah.
The building's going, right, something was.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
We haven't got complaints in the past 9.5 years, and all of a sudden, something's changed.
Yeah, the building makes the most sense, but I don't, it boggles my mind that taking a building down in the opposite direction would cause the sound to travel.
I mean, he isn't counting the trees back there.
No.
There's nothing back there.
The easiest solution is just have him turn it down a little bit.
Yeah.
And I already explained that to him.
That's what you were talking about, right? Yeah.
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 And the other thing I heard when I was down at their house was, and we can't do anything about it, but the motorcycles.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just a motorcycle pulling, you could tell it was pulling, not, I don't think it's coming out of Greg's driveway. You could hear it come down Milton Mills Road, and then when they hit one o' nine, they stepped, stepped on it.
Yeah.
And the sound once again right down through. So, I don't know which direction the motorcycle went. I'm assuming left at Milton Mills Road, but.
Yeah.
So, but the sound from that little area right there does travel right down the pond.
Exactly.
Yeah, it does.
Same with the boats off the lake. That's all I can hear about.
Yeah.
The motorcycle's going down one o' nine because the guy's riding it, loves the sound.
Yeah.
Especially when they go onto the bridge or something like that. They love to get a little extra and they enjoy it. I understand that.
Yeah.
But it's the boats act on off the lake. That's constantly, you know, a lot of times why we're in that area, that's all I can hear is now some, not so much loom because it's small, but you hear the boats. Today, it was a high wind day, so I wasn't picking up those noises.
Yeah.
So, I think I'll continue just working with him and trying to adjust this so it diminishes more and more.
Yeah.
And surprisingly, and maybe it's just the trees that are between him and Middle Road, that it's absorbed in the trees and it's going over. Everybody on Middle Road, but over the past month, and I'm inspecting on Middle Loop or E Shaw, I'm asking people and they say it's not bothering them. So, I mean, there's a couple of dozen that just over time, they know it, they, whatever. They're a customer, they bought it after that's been there.
Yeah. And like I say, when I went in, I stopped at Camp Nutter. You couldn't hear a thing. And I didn't just, I may have shut the radio off, pulled over, stopped, shut the truck off and listened and not even a whisper. So, it's definitely going down the pond.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay. Yeah, as long as we work somehow with Greg to make it.
You know.
You know, suitable. Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
I don't either.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Number two, we've got District Two Road Commissioner openings.
So, this is more of an update from, from last week on the CEO requirement. From the conversation that we had, I did send to Brad Moore from Broken Flag copy of the ad that we posted and a copy of the ordinance that is listed. And he puts a response that the person appointed to fill the vacant office must qualify in the same manner as one chosen in the regular course of municipal activity, although this will be an appointment by the board. I believe they have the ability to set qualifications to get the best candidate to fill the position on an interim basis, including a commercial driver's license, if that's what they feel is in the town's best interest. Given that it's an interim hire, they can set the criteria that they might look for in a typical employment position. This would be especially true if previous office holders had held such a license. The ad sounds like it's consistent with municipal activity under the statute. When it comes time to run for the office, that may be different because anyone has the right to run for office as long as they can meet the minimum requirements under state law. According to him, even with the ordinance, because the ordinance didn't specify, and that's what we tried to kind of say last week, it didn't say any qualifications. And certainly, you can change the ordinance to list out qualifications if you so choose, but it didn't list any, so you've had every right to put that in there if you wanted.
All right. Any questions, either one of you or?
Yeah.
All right. Three, personnel policy.
All right, so on the personnel policy, I told you that we still have a couple of changes. So, we wanted to move forward. So, if you open up, first of all, page three, this is the first one. This, this change is based on your decision that you guys had in your conversation last week. This is the recommended wording that came from that. Closing, employees may be excused from work due to reasons outside of their control as determined by the Board of Selectmen and/or town administrator. Closures such as snow days or building maintenance issues will result in employees being paid their regular scheduled hours for that day. Any closure of an extended holiday not listed in this policy will be unpaid or staff can choose to use PTO time if available. Next change is on page five. A new addition altogether from the legislature. An employee whose employment with the Town of Acton is terminated either by the employee or by the employer shall be paid out any unused PTO hours earned in the first pay cycle following the last day worked. One of the HR classes that she recently went to, it's, maybe put in policy, if the employee has earned it and they leave, you have to pay them.
Pay them, yep.
It's already gone. And then.
We don't need to vote on this or anything, just.
No, I mean, if you accept the changes.
We got to vote on it.
That's what I was going to say.
Absolutely do, yeah. That's your changes, you know.
Okay. How do you both, how do you both feel about the changes? Are you happy with them or?
Yeah, I think they're fine.
Typically, like H, I know some companies, what they do for the PTO hours, that what they'll do is they'll put a restriction on it so that if you don't give the two weeks, you just walk off. You don't get your PTO. I've heard of that, but this, this is fine. I like it.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion. We accept the personnel policy as updated this date.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All, all in favor? David, are you in favor of that?
Excuse me?
Are you in favor of the changes?
No, it's good. I mean.
I just, I didn't see you put your hand up. I was just asking. All right. All opposed? All right, we're done.
We have to press copy without underlying something.
Okay.
Just want to initial this.
On the last page, you're going to sign.
Yeah.
The annual policy.
All right, so we're moving on to number four, CIC appointments.
So, last week, we talked about the fact that we may have six people interested. We were looking for a five-member committee at the time, maybe you want six, I don't know. I printed off the names of the people for you.
Six is fine.
So, you want the right number?
So, should we try to get one more?
I'd stick with five.
So, how do we pick and choose?
No, we can review them and.
I was going to say, how do we?
Bring it back next week.
All right.
Want to meet with any of these people?
Possibly.
Yeah, that's what I was, all right. Buzel Road.
All right. So, last week, we had questions, comments, something about a piece of land that was given to the Town of Acton. The Town of Acton never, never voted for it. Used some research on what exactly was going on. I know we got some screenshots from someone that showed the deed. So, this is what I've been, I've managed to find out, because we didn't have the attorney and voting for it. So, there was the Buzel Road subdivision in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen that got approved and signed by three members of the planning board that did in fact list on the notes that a portion of land was being given to the Town of Acton. One of my very first questions was to make sure that this property owner gained nothing, I mean, not that it makes it right, but this property owner gained nothing by giving this land to the town. He didn't need to give this, this land to the town to make anything legal. As I understand it through conversation, he indicated he was trying to make more of a turnaround and more space for the road. Nevertheless, regardless of some of the tensions, you cannot, the town can't accept a gift on its own. Planning board doesn't have the authority, the selectmen don't have the authority, only the town voters do. And it's interesting, as I went back and read through that, because more than one planning board member mentions that at meetings. You know, they, they, you can read the meeting minutes and if somebody, actually, somebody sent me out minutes that highlighted that, and there were more than one planning board member that, that points that out during the process, that you can't do that, you know, you can't give us that piece. But I'm not sure how it all happened or what went down, but the people that were saying that, you know, we couldn't do that, actually ended up signing the plan and it was approved with the town's deeds. What happened there meant, as COVID enforcement understands it and the property owner, is that an attorney inadvertently filed this deed. Apparently, it was never supposed to be filed. The intention was that the property owner was going to come to the Town of Acton and they were going to come to the selectmen and they were going to ask you if you wanted this piece of land, whatever the pace of, the order of events were, it ended up getting filed, so it is out the register. What's happened since then, which made me feel a whole lot better about the whole thing, is that on June twelfth of two thousand and twenty, a new plan was signed by the planning board and approved. And it says in the notes, the intent of this plan is to revise the law lines on map two sixteen on three one through three seven to add the land that had been previously planned, had planned to be donated to the Town of Acton. So, they knew they couldn't, they knew, they knew that a plan approved had that land, they knew they never got town approval, they knew that couldn't happen that way. They corrected, they got corrected. Well, our work on today was trying to find this to be filed. And because of COVID and because of somebody's loss, they did indicate, really, Jones and Beach, it was not filed, but they assured me it'd be filed by the end of the week. Once we have a book and page that sums everything up. Our attorney is just putting together an amendment, if you will, an addendum to attach to the book and page that shows that, that shows that, that piece of land was given to the town. Because, and this is interesting to me anyways, that somebody can actually give you a piece of land and you never know it, it never happens, accepted, file it out of the registry. That just, it's interesting to me that, you know, people could just say, well, you know, here's a hundred acres, I'm not going to tell them, I'm not going to do anything, just file it out of the registry. Next thing you know, we're doing the research, we find my name on this deed. I don't know how that, how that really is legal, but. So, anyways, this addendum will be attached showing that the town never accepted it because we obviously can't unfile that deed.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Everything's been done, it's been cleaned, I recall up to make sure that it's recorded, but they're already taking the appropriate steps. And we talked about proper protocol and proper enforcement going forward, regarding that, and so I think all was left.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see here, number six, leasing out the gym.
Yeah, we kind of talked about that. We'll be able to, until I get more information, unfortunately. Looking like it's good without town.
Right.
Meeting approval, but that'll be up to you guys to decide if you want a special or what you want to do with it, but.
Okay. We've got petition update.
Okay. So, I just want to recap last week and make sure that I didn't misspeak in any way because I, I was spoken to by the petitioner and I'm not sure what piece, I want to make sure I didn't lead the board in any way. I gave you a copy of the petition that was sent. The petition references twenty, section twenty-five twenty-two, which says, you know, hereby, the voters back to hereby request that you call an open town meeting pursuant to twenty-five twenty-two to act on the following article. And it's listed out there and it's got lots and lots of signatures. Because COVID happened, that changed, his, he believed his ability to do it in that manner changed because he now knows that the town meeting that you guys had in June wasn't open, that that turned into a secret ballot. So, we did have a conversation at my, my counter about him possibly wanting to be voted on in the November election. So, I sent it over to Legal last week, so we can have go. And they basically said that the petitioner doesn't have the authority to make that change. And I just want to make it clear, and I don't think that I told you that there was any, any, he wasn't, nobody was trying to get anything by anybody, and I hope it didn't come across that way. I mean, it made sense that because of COVID, can't have an open town meeting, can we just put it on a secret ballot? And it seems like an easy enough fix, and that's what his thought was, but Legal says that we can't change it once voters have signed it. But what you can do is you can, at any time, call a secret ballot election, which you did in the town meeting. You could do one for any ordinance, as long as you meet the timeframe, you guys have a right. Now, you wouldn't be taking this petition article, but you could take the same article if you so chose, and you could put it on a secret ballot, and you could let him vote on it. Now, from Legal, one of the things that, that I wanted you to hear is that, so hi, Jennifer, as you know, the select board have the authority to draft warrant articles to be voted on by the town's legislative body. Even when the select board determines that a petition is not valid, the board can still put the article on the next town meeting warrant on its own initiative. When doing so, the board is not governed by voter petition statutes. So, you'd be doing it on your own. The board puts the article on a warrant on its own authority. Sometimes boards will decide to do this with an otherwise invalid petition warrant article on an upcoming warrant for political reasons, such as voter support through the article. But whether you guys agree with it or not, if there's, you know, two thousand signatures and you've got twenty-five hundred voters, maybe it's a good idea to do it. Or because the board supports the petition article and would like to see it move forward to the voter. If the board does so, they may decide to correct any errors in the article or modify the article to accomplish what the board wants to accept. So, the first thing you've got to kind of do is figure out what your intentions are to do with this, whether you want to put it on a secret ballot or whether you want to do it on an open town, open town meeting. In this case, it could be confusing for the select board to put a petitioned article on the next secret ballot, since petition is requiring the board to put it on the next open town meeting, and that's still technically valid. State law does not require that the select board hold a special town meeting within sixty days of receiving a petition. As discussed in the manual, section twenty-five twenty-two only requires that the board put the article on the next town meeting warrant, which could be more than sixty days away, or call a special town meeting in the sixty days, which could be held more than sixty days from the receipt. So, I did a few things with this. I did what you told me as far as sending it to Legal, is it a legal petition? You know, and you're going to get, you're going to get different opinions. I mean, the biggest conversation I had with trying to determine, you know, is it legal? Is it right? Is it, it comes down to enforcement. So, we know, I mean, you're going to have a difficult time with enforcement on the state. You need to make sure that you have, you know, you have a plan in place if it passes. But from the, from the clerk's point, we have to, we have to do something with the petition. We have to, you know, we need to certify the signatures. I'm going to tell you now, he's certainly going to have enough signatures. And we need to either say to him that it will be put in the next open town meeting pursuant to twenty-five twenty-two, or like I said, you have a right to call a meeting. You do not have time to put it on the November election.
Okay.
So, what are your thoughts on the wording of the petition and what direction you want to go in?
Well, enforcement, the way, the way, the way it's worded, from a layman's standpoint, sounds reasonable. From a logistical standpoint and actually making it work and enforcing it, it's almost impossible. One part of it was, you know, twenty percent, I think it said, is it twenty percent or no salt within three hundred feet of a well?
Are you in favor of establishing a town ordinance that reads, no person shall spread, discharge, or permit the discharge of straight road salt, salt brine, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride on any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within three hundred feet of wells? Sand salt mix used in the, in the eighth merchant area shall not exceed twenty percent salt.
So, that was not spreading it at all within three hundred feet of a well?
Uh, no person shall spread.
Okay.
On the list of all the items.
Yeah.
On any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within three hundred feet.
Of a well, okay.
Can we have Will come up and comment on this? I think that's him a question.
How do we enforce this? I mean, like with private roads and?
I mean, enforcement, you know, enforcement of any ordinance goes through either co-enforcement or the local ZEP.
Okay. I just, you know, and can we tell the state what to do?
No, we can't tell the state how to take care of their road.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know. I just, you know.
I've got a quick question for you, Will. You know, you've been doing this a little while now. Do you think that you could maintain your roads if we pass that?
No, I'll tell you, the town's equal safe. Like you said last week, you get a freezing rain, sleet, we'll be done with more sand on the roads and you'll know what to do with it.
Have you taken any classes yet from the state, whether or not?
No, I'm going to the state.
Okay, because I know the first thing they're going to tell you is they don't want you putting sand on a road.
Exactly.
They don't want sand on a road. They don't want sand on a road. So if we do this, we're going to go do the exact opposite of what DEP wants to do, and what the state main wants to do. And the problem is, is the people that signed that petition was not fully aware of why, what the intentions were, and we all, I know what the intentions were, because of a situation that happened on his private road. And if we put this, this petition forward, okay, I don't believe it'll go anywhere, but if it does, we will have a complete crap show on our hands here, we won't even know what to do with this. Because you're going to have outside entities coming in, sanding people's roads, oh, a little too much salt on it, what do you do about that? If he goes out there, you know, when we did the, when we do this, the parking, we used to do the parking lot, the fire station, we use straight salt, okay? And, and, you know, you do the math up, and I did this for quite a while, and I'm still doing this job, okay? We weren't straight salt, I used less material than I used to use, okay? Because when you do it with sand and stuff, you, you have a tendency to overmix or undermix or whatever, so you're, you're doubling up and this and that. If we do this, I don't, I don't think, think there's any way that we can enforce it.
That's the thing, I mean, you're going to sit down there, you're going to, three, are you going to sit down there, we're putting salt in every year, make sure we're putting 20% in?
Right.
It's setting you up for failure, and it's not safe for the, the people of the Town of Acton, because one person didn't want fluoride put on his camp road, because it's what it's about, that's what this is about, so, I mean...
I can understand, you know, in the Shoreline zones and them not wanting, you know, to pull this stuff.
A lot of Shoreland zone.
You know, it's not...
Well, this is a 300-foot well, I mean, it's, you know, we have to go up and mark everybody's well, so he knows where you can put salt.
There's some wells that are close to the roads, I know, I know.
It's an impossible task.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just setting ourselves up for failure, but hey, we could put it forward, I mean, I want to do this in an open meeting, so I can see everybody that voted for that. So when everything hits a fan, and we know what, you know, that's, that's, these are people who did this, but we do it by a secret ballot, I'd rather not.
I would rather do it in an open town meeting, if we're going to do it.
Either way.
So if we're treated, if that's the intention of the board, we're treating as a petition received, we'll follow state sand, and then we'll go on the next open town meeting pursuant to 2522. We'll certify the signatures and notify the petitioner, but it's definitely got enough to go on, so...
Okay, now, we, we can wait until June's meeting?
It's that.
Okay.
State law does not require that the select board hold a special town meeting within 60 days of receiving a petition pursuant to 2522, it only requires that the board put the article on the next town meeting warrant.
Okay, maybe we should have some kind of a meeting, meeting to discuss.
We ought to have a meeting prior to it.
But if you end up having one for zoning or something else, I mean, this is the next warrant.
Yeah, so it could go on the next...
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about, though, is before this goes, there should be some kind of informational, come to the town hall and let's all, you know...
If, because it's an open town meeting, you don't have to have a public hearing, because that means it's considered to be a public hearing, it's a surrounded well, there's two different...
I don't know, I'm just, you know, so they know both...
I think it'd be a really good idea to do that.
So they know both sides, I mean, you know, I just...
Do you have, are you seeing a town meeting in our future?
I don't know.
I'm hoping, next year, it'd be really nice, but I don't know.
Well, June, but I don't, I don't know if we'll have one before June.
I'm hoping, and the next one we have, we're going to actually be able to put our cards up and do it in public, so hopefully June.
I'll prepare those outside.
We could do it outside.
We're in outside.
We could do it in the field at the school, couldn't we?
You're at the whim of the weather, too, though.
At this point, I mean, not, this is nothing, please don't take this along, it's nothing to do with this petition, but other than this petition, we don't have anything pressing. And as I understand, the zoning proposals over before, he's comfortable with those waiting.
Right, he said he was fine.
Right now, we're not having that pressing, correct?
Not that I can think of. Alrighty, eight, Newfield request.
This comes from the administrator in Acton, in Newfield. Hi Jennifer, at the board meeting on Tuesday, the board discussed some information that was relayed to us from the dam keeper. The first being that he's, he will be draining the lake down lower than normal this year, so people can start making some necessary repairs for the dock. I'll be posting this on the website for the town, and I know Jeff put up signs at his stores for the drawdown starting October 13th. So that's, what, vault, what do they call that dam?
Yeah, bulge.
Let's make some signs, October 13th, lowering of vault, all right. He is supposed to be putting together a letter of notice for informational purpose, and I will be sure to pass you on once we receive it, okay? The other topic we discussed was compensation for the dam keeper. He has asked that the pay be increased to 1,500 for the season, being split between the two towns, that's a payment of $750. The Newfield selectmen agree, this is a reasonable request, and would like to proceed. So we have budgeted $550, and it's written in a warrant article, so we really can't pay any more than that, but I wanted to tell you that, I wanted to make sure...
Well, their town meeting is, there's not March, is it?
I don't know, I don't know when there's, I don't know when theirs is, but they could have worded it differently, we put the dam keeper's stipend in there, so if we had, if it was an open article for, you know, the, for the whole dam, for X amount of money, and it didn't just say one thing, might have some wiggle room on the pay, but if you have a line item that says something, and this, that's from Michelle, we budgeted 550, and that's written in the warrant article, so we can't pay more this year.
Something to think about for next year, right?
Consider it for next year's budget season, but...
Yeah, that, yeah, that and make a note in case we do have a special town meeting.
Right. Alrighty, new business, sand bid.
So Will doesn't know this yet, but Will and I worked on the sand bid today. I said, Will and I worked on the sand bid today. The Town of Acton is soliciting bids for 4,000 yards of 3/8 green winter sand, interested bidders must complete the form below, there's no change really other than the date, so I guess I just needed to confirm, and I didn't have a chance to call you back. 4,000 is still good, 3/8 is what you're looking for, and the only question that we had put on the bottom was the normal business hours outside of routine weekends.
When you put 4,000, yeah, can we read that line again?
The Town of Acton is soliciting bids for up to 4,000 yards of 3/8 green winter sand.
Yep, what do you, what do you have in there right now, Will? Do we have a...
Uh, there's probably, there's probably like 18, maybe 1,500 dollars, I think, the high end, 1,500, I'd say.
What are you looking to put in, another 1,500, 1,800?
Yeah, 2,000, we go, make sure we got our salt, and that's the other thing, have you heard?
Yeah, please.
Have we, have we heard anything about the salt, sir?
Nope, I have sent an email to the, we usually get the call and bid command, and we usually get one from, what's the other company?
Grant State.
Grant State, and as of now, I haven't gotten any, have you?
No, I haven't gotten nothing.
I did send an email to the call, and I haven't reached out to Grant, but I'll make sure that we do that in the next, in case.
Yes, I can just call, call Grant State.
Thanks. All right, I guess I need a motion, gentlemen.
Do you want to public comment first, or wait?
Want to do public comment first?
Sure.
We could.
I think it's probably a good idea.
All right, how about public comment? Do we have anybody that wants to come up?
I just wanted to let the board know that there's been two planning board meetings in the county, a sidewalk that is not hitting U2 yet, I'm not quite sure, I mean, I would think that they would go in Chronicle Lunt's order as far as one day at a time, but apparently that's not the case, because there was one in the town, sidewalk on the 12th, and another meeting in the 17th, and I checked just before the meeting, and I didn't see that on U2 yet.
Okay.
The board does have a three-day policy, so I'll send an email, I'll be soon.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Nathan Tapscott on East Shore Drive, just a couple things from what I heard earlier. I did, I pulled the file up, and I saw that past permits for the Apple Place, from Pat Hannan had it, and changes he did, and the IGT, I actually have a copy of the IGT on the, on the, there's nothing about live entertainment, so that's a necessary use, or noise level, they're unable to exceed the noise level. Noise level, it doesn't have to be on the plan, it's not on the plan, you go, you go by, is it only ordinance, you can't exceed it. Um, let's see, the exemption Ken was talking about is noise created by recreational activities which are permitted by law and for which has a license or permit, has been granted by the town, so he doesn't have a license or permit for live entertainment, he has a permit for restaurant. So to me, that's, if somebody wanted to have a concert, they come before the Board of Selectmen, have a one day, something like that, and that's, that's, to me, it's, there's no barrier, to me, that's what it means, so, just wanted to point that out to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session 4056A-1, personal matter.
Yes.
Okay, all opposed?
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session 4056A-1 at 7:16.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All right.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion, we have interviews for the District Two Road Commissioner, the candidates that we had.
Okay.
Candidate A, B, and D.
A, B, and D, okay, got it? And we want to do that on...
Go Monday night?
Monday night.
If they're available.
Starting at...
Six.
Six, half hour, six, 6:30, 7?
Yeah, that sounds good, yep.
Right, and we'll start tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome, committee.
All right, we did have a comment, announcements, um, next Wednesday, what would the date be?
September 30th.
30th.
So on September 30th, there will not be a selectman's meeting. Any other announcements? Anybody else have any?
No.
No? Okay, well, then I guess I need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.